I now call the Wednesday, May 15th meeting of the State Board of Education to order. Welcome to everyone in the room, and this will be broadcast online, or I should say the recording will be online when we are finished here because we're not live streaming today. We have nine board members present and one on the phone since we don't have a Zoom screen today. So, good morning to Jim McNeese. He says, "Good morning." Should we put him on speaker? We'll put you on speaker. You're welcome to mute on your side. Our first item on the agenda is item two, Receive Staff Recommendation and Board Action on Amendments to KAR 91-31-35. This is able to follow vote. And Scotty, you want to remind us what we're going out?
Madam Chair, just in case there are any questions from me, I won't see in the proposed regulation. I haven't answered any questions about the actual language or what it means, if the board has to.
And I guess I didn't read the last part. This is minimum graduation requirements. You should have your packet under your computer. Just comments. Yes. Oh, and we don't have a hand raise app today, so yes. Shout out or raise your hand.
I watched, I think, all of the meetings, which obviously just happened before I was on the board. I have a very little issue with the FASFA requirement. Couple of things. Everything that I've watched over and over, the comments were, "We would never withhold the diploma if this wasn't done." Well, then I have, I believe it's disingenuous to call it graduation requirement when they're saying it's extremely optional. It's not completely required. Anybody can not only opt out, but just not do it, and we would never withhold the diploma. I feel like that's not sending a good message when we're saying it's a graduation requirement, but it's obviously not. I disagree with the being in there at all. I understand it wasn't a part of the final vote. That's not necessarily what we're voting on today. But to say that, I mean, I didn't get online to double check, but what our public spoke yesterday was that we have whole districts that are opting out, that are obviously hard to pay with this, being forced on their students. To me, it's obviously a marketing issue. People want people to know. I so appreciate that. That is a huge deal. Student Aid themselves brings out emails to high school senior parents. You can go online and you can see by school how many applications have been submitted. There's many ways to do this. I don't believe saying it's a requirement, while at the same time saying it's not because we would never withhold the diploma, then it should be in our graduation requirements. It just, it doesn't sit. I don't believe it's a good statement to make. So, I just, I need to put that out there, please. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Anne?
I totally get Kathy's concern, but I think the way to deal with that is not to vote these down. If we vote these down, we have just destroyed years' worth of work. But if we don't like FASFA, we can approve this as is, and then next month take up FASFA and change that regulation, once we've had a discussion about it, which makes more sense. But years of work went into this, and I think we need to get it out there and then deal with FASFA afterwards if our attorney says that's an appropriate approach. Can we do that?
So, Madam Chair, is that a question? And if I answered the question correctly, can you amend this regulation once you adopt it? Yes. Yeah, that could occur.
Madam Chair, I have a little conflict about this also because it really is a parent choice issue, and I think it should be up to the districts to decide whether they want to advertise it. You know, even private banks are powerful, and so they're looking for ways of going to policy. So, I would just like a commitment from the officers that we revisit this at our board meeting in June as a motion to strike that statement from the regulations.
It's not that it can be done. It'll be for confirmation.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Here is what can be done, if I understand the desire correctly. I can just kind of explain, if you were to either amend this regulation before you adopt it, or you decide not to adopt it, then the graduation requirements probably will not, the changes would not be in place in time for incoming freshman class, which is what I was prepared to do. One option that I'll just throw out there. You could adopt the entire regulation as written. That would go into effect within roughly 30, 45 days after you vote. So, that would go into effect for the incoming freshman class before those freshmen are seniors. So, I'm giving myself four years. If the board chose, you could ask us to come back with an amendment to that regulation, striking that requirement. And I believe we could have that written in a way to where no student would ever be held accountable, no school, I should correct this up, no school district that's accredited by you would ever be held accountable for graduating students who did not complete the FASFA, because that requirement would be removed before they ever get to the university. I can't give you a timeline now, how long that would take. I'll just, here's, it took us a year, right, to get here for the current language that you have for the entire page and half done. One time it took a month to get a punctuation mistake corrected. So, that's kind of the range of what I'm saying it'll take, but I have no doubt that if you want to approve these as written and then strike the FASFA requirement, I would say a year or less that can be done.
Any more discuss? Any further discussion? Jim, what are you trying to say? I've got a couple. Jim, more?
I'd just say that, then it's for my part, I'll make a commitment on my part for what I have to do to add to that.
And I'll do the same.
Okay. I appreciate it. Yeah, thanks. And in that, I promise I'll make a yes vote on this. If you have any thoughts.
I want to echo what was said. I served on the task force for graduation requirements changes. There were over 40 people from schools and the, schools and the community that came together, slid into groups, and that work happened over a year. There was a tremendous amount of work that went into these changes, and kind of to the point that was made yesterday, sometimes it's our responsibility as a board to carry forward something that a previous board worked on, and that's certainly the case here. So, I will leave. Here, Jim? I think.
Jim, do you want to speak, or are you just waiting?
You can make your argument several parts forward. I would just say this. The graduation task force worked diligently over time, and involved all kinds of situations we could possibly have dealt with. And the general consensus was what you see today. I regret that it's a different board today. I regret I'm not there, but the work that they did was exemplary, and at the best interest of the students of Kansas in mind through the entire process. So, I would ask that people vote affirmatively on the graduation requirements and move forward. Thank you.
Further discussion, Dina?
I just wanted to comment and say that knowing the process of approving, getting the approval of regulations finished, it's a lengthy process. And so, it's very important, I think, that we consider the bulk of the changes, and we don't seem to have any objection to those. But when we're looking at one thing that we have concern about, it seems to me that we can come back at a later date and remove that, so as has been suggested. So, I hope everyone will recognize that the change is important, the bulk of the changes, and the facts that we can deal with later. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to make a comment that if we are waiting on perfection, then change will never happen. With that, I am prepared to make a motion if you're ready to receive it.
Ready.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the proposed amendment to the Minimum High School Graduation Requirement Regulations, KAR, I don't have my glasses,
Is there a second? Jim, more? Ready to vote? That's rule call, so I'll just start with Anne. Aye. Dina?
Aye.
Jim? Kathy? Michelle?
Sticking with my original vote, that's a no.
Dennis? Kathy? And Jim McNeese? This is not something that goes into statute, but listen to the board meetings. Welcome, Dr. Johnson. There you are. Good morning.
Okay, good morning, Madam Chair and the State Board members. Dr. Watson, I want to just quickly present to you a couple of additions to our post-secondary asset list that was approved by the board. As we review the post-secondary assets and talk to school systems about those, we recognize that 90% attendance rate probably isn't the standard that we want to establish as part of that, kind of that philosophy behind our post-secondary assets, so we're recommending that we increase that to 95%. And 95% would reflect a, kind of an average daily attendance rate prior to COVID. We would have been around the 94.5% to 95% range. It felt like that was a good standard to establish. And then the additional item would be the, what we call state-level career and technical student organization officers. So, those that would be a part of organizations like FBLA, FCCLA, TATA, OSA, these established state-level officers being included in that post-secondary asset list as well. In addition, for today, that's our recommendation to add to the list that's already been approved. And we'll be bringing back to the board a process that we will go through and work with school systems on for any changes moving forward, as we think about other things that could be added over time if we want the board to consider those things, we'll work through a collaborative process to establish this. So, this would be leading into the new graduation requirements, what we would include in that post-secondary asset list.
Any questions?
With the understanding that this list is fluid and we can add to it, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the post-secondary asset graduation requirements list as recommended.
Second, Dina? Further discussion? More questions? Ready to vote? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Send it, yes vote from Jim. And no? No exceptions? An 8-2 vote, motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And next we have the consent agenda, as approved yesterday. Minus items D, E, F, I, J, and K. We will vote on each of those.
Sorry.
D, E, F.
J, L.
I, J, L. My mistake. J, L. A motion to approve, or a motion to vote on the consent agenda as amended would be an order. Dina and Betty. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Any yes from the board? No? No votes? Oh, it was amended, sorry. No, no, hang on, let's back up. We approved the consent agenda yesterday with the changes. We're voting to pass the consent agenda. Minus items.
Okay.
Okay. So, and Danny, you had your hand down, so I got an 8-2 on that. Is that correct?
I thought this was everything but.
Correct. It's everything but.
Put your hand up. Okay. All right. Item D, Act on Kansas Parents as Teachers Grants for 2024-25. So, I don't know if we have anyone here who wants to speak to that, or if we're ready to vote. Anne, discussion?
I mean, we are in charge of Parents as Teachers, and it's amazing program. This is $9.5 million of services for young parents. It's really, really important. And so, are we voting on these individually?
Individually.
I'll move to approve item D.
Is that a second?
My late school districts get over $500,000 in services, so gotta go forward.
Any further discussion? Jim? No? Further discussion on Parents as Teachers? I will just comment that this is a program that I've had a lot of exposure to personally. I had two parent educators come into my home, and my children were very young. I've been to the Parents as Teachers Center, the district set up. They provide all kinds of resources to parents and have children, say, children they play centers. There are books that you can check out. I think it's a wonderful resource for the community, and I've had nothing but good feedback, and so I'll do my best. Any further discussion? All in favor of item D, raise your hand.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yes.
Eight.
No? Against?
One, two, eight, two.
Eight, two vote, motion passes. Item E, Act on Recommendations for Funding Kansas Preschool Age At-Risk Programs for 2024 to 2025. Anne?
Well, this one in particular falls right in line with our kindergarten readiness efforts. And again, it's a lot of money to provide services for three- and four-year-olds who are at risk, and these are not the kind of kids actually who would go to other places for preschool services. We're the ones that are in charge of taking care of these little at-risk kids, so with that, I'd like to move approval of item E.
Is there a second?
Right here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Opposed?
One, two, three.
Seven, three, motion passes. Item F, Act on KU Assessment of Contract Selection. Any discussion on this one? Anne?
Well, this one just makes sense because we're redoing three tests next year, and so we need an extension, and I move approval of item F.
For a second? Madam Chair? Kathy?
There was some conversation through the legislature, some hearing I watched, I didn't know a little bit, but I think there's been something said at that level about changing our tests before 2030. I don't know. I'm just asking literally. Is there something going on with the legislature that not making changes to our assessments?
Frank may want to speak to that, as you mentioned that too yesterday in Senate 387.
So, as part of Senate 387 in the at-risk portion, there's language that says the State Board shall not change the curricular standards for ELA or Math, and then they define changing the standards as necessitating a change in the assessment. The legislation in the bill does not talk about changing the assessment. It talks about changing the curricular standards for ELA and Math. Yeah, and actually it says that you can't change the standards that are in place in 2023 that would necessitate a change in the assessment. You changed the standards years ago, so there's no change there. The change in the assessment is due to the previous change in the standards, so there isn't a conflict with the current bill.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
10, 0, motion passes. Our next item is I. Act on Request to Contract with the Northeast Kansas Education Service Center Keystone Learning Services to Support Annual Perkins Five Annual Civil Rights Reviews. Any questions or discussion? Present in the room? Not a motion is in order? Anne?
I'll move to approve item I, but I think, Randy, don't we have to do this compliance?
Well, state statute, I want to go back a little bit. State statute says that we're to run a Parents as Teachers program for year old at risk. The legislature says distribute this money. In this case, federal government says, here's Perkins to be distributed. And so, in those cases, we're following the law.
Yeah.
And so, that's what this is. This is to provide civil rights review and disputes related to Perkins, and we have to have that in case any school district would want to.
Gotcha.
So, for us to review.
Well, it doesn't matter if we take local, state, or federal money. There is always something tied to it, no matter where you get it, and it's called accountability, and that's what this is. So, again, I'll move item I.
Is there a second? Benny? Further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Yes.
Eight.
Eight, two.
Eight, two, motion passes. Item J, Act on Request to Contract Through Room Number to Support Administration of Perkins Five. If that's not explanatory, any questions or discussion? Not a motion would be in order? Need a motion or we can't vote?
Where you at, Matt?
Maybe, Jim? And Jim McNeese seconds? Jim and Jim? Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Opposed?
One, two.
Eight, two, motion passes. We have one more. Item L, Act on Recommendations for Funding the 2024-25 AmeriCorps Kansas Grant Allows. I think I saw Jessica. Do you want to say anything on this? I'll start with questions, questions or discussion on this item?
I just wanted to ask, in the future, if we could give more information, I mean, it's a dollar now. We really don't have any information on how it's being spent, because we don't have any information on follow-up, if we're paying attention to how it's being spent. We see a lot of these things come through, and literally all we give is, here's the people, or the, you know, boys and girls vote, and here's the dollar now. We are giving nothing, and it really is a struggle for me to vote on things that that's all I get. So, I was just asking, if we could get more information so we even understand, oh, what exactly are we giving? That's a real struggle for me. So, I would really appreciate if we could get some more details, some understanding. Watching over this money, are they using it the way they say they're using it? Like, what are we doing? Because if it's passing through, it's not the same kind of thing we're supposed to have.
So, I would add, I'll respond to that because I serve on the Kansas Volunteer Commission, which approves the AmeriCorps grants. And so, I would say that that is the accountability, but it sounds like we could probably do a better job of bringing that information back to the board. Ms. Dorsey has been in front of the board and presented on what the volunteer commission does, including the AmeriCorps grants, whether maybe it is connected, you know, the specifics around the grants. So, when it comes up on the consent agenda like this, you can always ask more detail. Happy to get in.
Michelle? Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I would like to add to that, as far as AmeriCorps, right? We kind of had some personal conversations when you come down and forth and talked about these things, and then we had a presentation, I think it was three or four months ago, when they talked about paying minimal amount for volunteerism. That is an oxymoron. You don't, you were not paid ever to volunteer. Volunteers should come from the heart. It should come from charity work. It should come from more of our churches, not, that they give back to the communities, and it's something that my children go to church with me, and they come along with me, and they do things because this is what we do as a family. It's not something that I have to, when I see 50 hours or plus, that now kids have to volunteer at school, and then they have to document that down back to the government and to be in some, maybe in a National Honor Society or something like that, that is very bothersome for me, and isn't something that my kids were ever required to do fortunately in high school, as of right now, because they're not in the National Honor Society. That isn't something that we partake in with the family. So, I, those things kind of are like, it becomes a requirement. That is where I'm going to have to push back, and so I don't approve a lot of these funds that come in because I don't, like Kathy says, you don't know where, I mean, there are businesses that kids are now leaving school and going and volunteering, but that I may not approve of that as a parent. They might go out there and get a job and do something like that after work, and look for a business and be accountable there, but as volunteers, we don't have to have a reward for that. We don't have to have a cord for that around our neck when graduation time comes. These are something that things that we do as a family from the heart, and so I'm going to push back as a, as a elected board member on that being a requirement or adding to volunteerism as a requirement of graduation requirement. So, same with the AmeriCorps, things that are coming in, I don't, I don't know where that money's going, or what's being, what are they volunteering for when they're coming in, what those things, that money's being used for, and I'm just going to, I'm just going to put that out there, because these are things that have been building up over the last five years, as far as things in the way, I don't approve a lot of these things that come in. So, thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes, if I can make a comment, and it really seems appropriate, because there's an assumption that all children are born into a family that supports, that will take them to church, that will teach them all that they need to be taught. I've made this comment before, Michelle, you're an amazing mother, but not all children are fortunate enough to have that support system. And when we push back against the opportunity to step up and help those that are less fortunate, that's not fair to those children. I can appreciate a concern. I do believe that at some point, we have to trust the integrity. I do believe that at some point, we have to trust the integrity of the people that we have hired, that are hired to do their job. If they're not doing their job, then that's totally another issue. I just would ask you sometimes to remember, all children are not fortunate. All children don't even think in terms of the value of giving back. And if we can't embrace those children that are less fortunate, teaching them the way to go, then what is that saying about our position? One size does not fit all. I am not debating against your choice on how you vote. But I do think sometimes it warrants considering the other side. And there is another side that is equally as important. We cannot dictate what churches should or should not do. We can't dictate who should be doing this and who should be doing that. The only thing that we can control is right here, our vote in this environment. Not let them do it. It's let us make the decision, does this warrant our consideration? And I would just ask that you remember, those kids that are less fortunate, which is when I stand up, and the opportunity that they need to learn. That's just my request that you open up.
So 50 hours of volunteerism through the school, that may or may not be a request.
I just said, I just don't know if you want to come up and say.
So I mean, on this, on this thing, there's going to be this other thing.
Right now, we're talking about.
So my mention is, is God going to be mentioned? Is in those, in those times they're volunteering at school, the school work? It's not. No, okay, all right. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that we just keep growing and growing and growing. And, and, and well, and churches like that, or less, churches less or less. It's more, it's more government, just more government growing.
Anne?
This is for grants for groups that could include faith-based organizations. Okay, has nothing to do with kids volunteering in school, what we're voting on right now. Okay? Faith-based organizations are eligible to compete for these grants. And I think they're probably so long. That's what we're voting on today. Anyway, it has nothing to do with kids volunteering in school, 50 hours.
Yeah, I should, that is what we're voting on. Yeah, absolutely. So I'll try to answer the question from the panel class sequentially. So to this happen, we can certainly provide the executive summary and we can provide information about our very rigorous monitoring strategy that we have. Every month that these programs request their dollars, this is a cost reimbursement grant, which means no dollars go to these organizations from the onset. So the organization spends their own dollars and they submit for reimbursement through the AmeriCorps. They have to provide documentation for every line item at the time of requesting reimbursement. So we have a financial officer that reviews that information and then we okay the request back to them. We also have a risk-based monitoring assessment that we perform annually that goes through nearly 20 different activities or objectives that we are monitoring them on to assess the risk of the organization. We then identify those who never, they're never really high risk. We only just have medium risk and low risk. But we will then monitor them every three years at a minimum unless someone is high risk or you program a non-riskified monitoring. We also do desktop monitoring all throughout the year, checking for a variety of different things. So we can provide our monitoring plan to you all and we can provide those executive summaries. So we'd be happy to do that. So to Mr. Rossy's question, the AmeriCorps program is not a volunteer program. Somewhere along the way, it got confused that volunteerism was synonymous with AmeriCorps National Service, and it's not. The two are not the same. If you think about the Peace Corps, when someone deploys abroad and they're serving in a variety of countries, they receive a stipend for that because that is their job. AmeriCorps is the domestic version of the Peace Corps. And so these individuals are committing to a term of service, which very often means they're not working elsewhere. This becomes their job. And so there is a very modest living allowance. If they're serving full-time, which is going to be 40 hours a week, they will receive $18,700 for the whole year. I don't think that any of us can live on $18,700. So it's a very modest living allowance that is for their national service, which is not the same as volunteerism. And Ms. Ma is correct that we do have faith-based organizations are eligible to apply. We do not receive any applications this year from any faith-based organizations. Almost our entire portfolio, to get back to what these programs are doing, is education. So almost all of our programs are providing either direct support to students through tutoring, mentoring. We have a program that's monitoring for chronic absenteeism, providing interventions to families, environmental education. And this year, we wanted to make sure that we were supporting the structured literacy initiative of the Kansas State Department of Education. So two of our planning grants at 4A State and Wichita State University will be developing programming to utilize AmeriCorps dollars to advance structured literacy throughout the state. So we're trying to be very strategic about how we're using these dollars to advance the agency's mission, vision, and that's all.
Thank you. Anne, go ahead.
Can I just ask, why don't you give us just a quick history of the origin?
Yes, absolutely. So AmeriCorps started in 1994 under then-President George Bush, who started it as part of the Serve America Act. AmeriCorps LISTA, Volunteers in Service to America, you might recall, because that program has been around for many years before that. It started as part of Lyndon Johnson's War on Poverty back in the 60s. And so the AmeriCorps LISTA program started then and then President Bush in 1994 started the AmeriCorps state and national programming. So our members are either providing capacity building services to organizations or they're providing direct services to individuals in their community. We exist as the Kansas Volunteer Commission because part of the statute that established the Serve America Act said that every state must have a commission that is developed to make sure that we're appropriately allocating and monitoring the AmeriCorps funds. In our state, we do more than AmeriCorps at the Kansas Volunteer Commission. We also promote volunteerism, which the Kansas Volunteer Commission has a prohibition that we never pay volunteer stipends, ever. It's a prohibition in every grant. AmeriCorps is different because it's national service. We also do youth mentoring, we run a youth mentoring initiative, and we help promote civic engagement across the state. All nonpartisan, we have a list of prohibited activities that come from the federal government. So we would never have an AmeriCorps member that is proselytizing to students. That's a prohibited activity. We can't mix church and state with our AmeriCorps funds.
Anne, to be clear, the 2.7 million that we're distributing here to these community organizations is largely for educational services.
Ninety-five percent.
Yeah. So we got 2.7 million in educational services through community organizations that apply. Do we have a motion? Because if not, I'll move we approve item.
Ready for a motion?
Move we approve item L.
Take a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand.
One, two, three.
Chair?
Four, five, six, seven.
AmeriCorps. Yes.
Eight.
Eight, four.
Opposed?
One.
Abstained? Because I'm opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
So that's an eight, one, one, motion passes. Thank you, Jessica. And, and, did you end up? Move on to the chair report, which will be brief. Sorry, speak up, she says. Use my teacher voice, right? Not a teacher, but I can try for Jeff. Jim is less than eight. Okay, okay.
I don't know, we don't know on K, because I can't hear a bird.
Yeah.
We did, sorry, we did not vote separately on K, we voted on L.
Okay, so we have voted on K.
It was part of the first motion. It was part of the, do you want to pull K?
I want to make sure that I get, have a guess vote on that.
Yes.
Okay, because I, I just, sorry, my ear and eyes are causing me issues.
Well, I know.
Which I'm sure you will say that is.
All right, quickly on the chair, I am appointing Dr. Lori Curtis to the Literacy Advisory Committee as requested by K Board. The Board was to appoint either a member or someone to serve in our place, and so I'm appointing Dr. Lori Curtis. And then need to let the board know, and Mr. Board and I would appreciate your help here perhaps. In the bundle of information that we collected yesterday, you may have noticed a petition for motion for oral argument before the State Board of Animation. I'll point out that Mark, our, the board attorney, Mark Ferguson, has not been with us this month. And so while Scott's been sitting in Mark's chair and advised me on how to run the meeting, if I have questions, I want to ask you, it looks like this is something that we need to respond to quickly. And so we're looking at potentially setting a date for this. Do you want to give the board any background on this?
Madam Chair, the only thing about my comment is, and what would be referred to as our term of qualification. As you know, agency notes, I'm not your attorney. I can answer general questions and anybody familiar with the regulations for us can answer, which is what I've done today. On something like this, because I am serving separately as a hearing officer, I'm not in a position and I won't give you any legal advice on how to handle the motion that was said yesterday. That is our responsibility, but the board attorney, Mark Ferguson, he is going to be advising the board moving forward. So I appreciate your opportunity.
Thank you. So I spoke to Mark on the phone because he is out of town. We are looking at having a meeting, a special meeting of the board on Zoom a week from Friday. So that would be May 24, probably 10:00 a.m. I'm just looking for kind of, you want to check your calendar real quick? It's something that we need to.
What time?
10:00 a.m. on May 24. And it'd be a week, it'd be a week from, from this Friday.
Just to clarify that's.
It is, yes, right. So if you do it early in the day, maybe you can still get on some holiday weekends. That'll be fun. All right, no need to vote on it. I just wanted to inform the board and you may want to review the motion.
Commissioner?
So the purpose of the meeting will be to establish, for the board to establish the protocol you want to have for the hearing to happen in June. So the protocol you want to see happen for the hearing in June. You have, you have a request for oral argument, so you may take that, you're dismissed to do something else, but that's the purpose of it. And so it'll be on Zoom and that will be the only topic on the agenda.
And it's the transfer of prom.
Yes, that is correct.
Two different, it's.
Okay, yes.
All right, that's all I have for the chair's report. Can you find the item, Act on More Travel Requests? You've had a copy in your pocket, are there any changes to travel? And if not a motion, would be in order.
Do you need a motion?
No, I'm just used to saying that.
No, you can just, you can just call.
Any additions to board travel? Any additions to board travel? Like we're good on board travel. You aren't making changes? Any committee reports? Any committee reports?
If I can speak for Mark, we're still working on the negotiations with school for death. We have our meeting, we have our meeting announced Tuesday, on the 21st on that. So we'll probably bring something back before, because that will, it's all going. Can you, on that one, this week, that, for teachers, we have negotiations.
Any requests for future items?
Michelle, so thank you, Madam Chair. So yesterday, we had a 35-minute presentation. Frisk came by and spoke to us, spoke to us on the mental health things. That there were so many questions that were, I mean, I was writing things down and I just feel like it'd be nice to have like a little bit of a follow-up to her presentation. So I mean, I wouldn't be respectful of time, but there were certain things that kind of contradicted themselves within, in the presentation. Went back and watched it again just to, heard her correctly on some things. I just feel like it'd be nice, maybe in, I don't know, maybe in June, but maybe in July, more discussion, I guess, on the presentation that we were given yesterday. Because I didn't feel like there were, when you're, when you're absorbing that from a presentation standpoint and then you're hearing things maybe differently or how she says things differently, you're, you have questions, but then you're like, I don't want to have, I don't want to take up everybody's time. You know, and just, because it's like time segmented for us. It's like 35 minutes, they presented for 35 minutes, then how long do we have for discussion? So those are the kinds of things. I mean, there were, there were, one of the biggest things that jumped out at me is the connection. There's, I guess there's a connection with a kid in the school. Maybe I misunderstood what she was talking about, but every single day, like a check-in with these kids, are these kids that are being screened or flagged or for that? Or is that something that's just, they're just doing ongoing? Those would be my questions because they said, she said at the very beginning, every parent has to be a partner in this. Every parent needs to know this is going on. Well, if you've screened or you've taken even one or five things that you've noticed of behavior and you've got all these different people, and as she talked about the ratios, how would, how would they identify, how would they even know anything about that child? They just might have an update, you know? And somebody took a snapshot. So those are the kinds of things. There was a lot, there were a lot of contradictions in the presentation. I just would like some more further discussion on that. I wrote on. Yes, yes.
Yeah, since I serve on that committee and actually.
Is this a future item or?
And you're absolutely correct. That's a lot of information to digest. It's very interesting because I too thought that it was time, as I chaired that committee, that we came to the board for a conversation to talk about perhaps some directions that the board, that the board might want us to look at. So it is, it's a good request and I was going to suggest that as well, so thank you.
Any other future agenda?
Just remind that the future agenda would be to add the past, the new agenda. As we see about.
Yep, that is, that is done. And Dana?
I did not hear. My, my hearing aids, a lot of times you're speaking away from me.
Yep, understood.
And so.
Michelle's request.
I did not get the travel request and I did not hear you ask for that. And I have one that, several that should be added.
Okay, do you want to read them now or send them over email?
Well, they need to be done before next month.
You can email them if you like.
So you want to just do a special one for me? On 5/2, there was a Zoom with ABC. The PEP Committee will be Zooming on 5/21. And 6/12, 6/13, I'll be at my final case of executive board meeting. And I think that's, that's all.
Thank you, Jim. That's it. All in favor, raise your hand. And we lost Jim, that's a diner move.
Thank you for letting me remedy my mistake. Me, me too.
All right. Last call for future agenda items. Mark, this is me. Yes, sir.
I, I would like for us to start the conversation on screen time in relationship to mental health, and just how, um, amount of screen time that's used, class hours that's legitimate for learning versus social media or distractions. Because I, that seems to be the topic that is, a lot of data coming out on how that is creating oppression inside, um, age groups 15, 18, and especially...
Got it. Any other future agenda items? Bring us to the end of the board meeting. Okay. We are going to adjourn, and then the program will begin at 10:30.
If you could be in your seats at 10:20, 25, that would be helpful. We'll get the wire set up, but you can wander around the building, so get up.
So before I fang the gavel here, I just want to say a thank you on behalf of the Board, to the Museum for letting us be here today and have this meeting. Enjoy, enjoy your break.
Good morning. Well, my name is Melanie Ross. I'm the Chair of the Kansas State Board of Education. May you see the morning? On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank the Brown vs. Topeka Board of Education, National Historic Site, and Museum for allowing us to visit today during what is certainly a busy time around here. I just saw a whole group of students walk down the hall from Los Alamos. It was an honor to be able to hold our, a small portion of our board meeting here this morning, which we just wrapped up about half an hour ago. And the building that was once so memorable, elementary school and the school, which certainly has its own special place in history. Why are we here today? To recognize and celebrate the 70th, right? But also, we're here to consider the changes in our society since the Lamar Court decision. This is an opportunity to reflect on how far we've come and how far we still have to go. Importantly, it's also an opportunity to look at how policy shapes outcomes for each and every student, and to recognize even how civic engagement matters. In the planning process alone for this event, I learned so much about this building, about Topeka schools, about the work that led up to the decision where it was ultimately handed down by the Court. I hope that each of you learned something new today, even if you're well-studied on this topic. So, as we begin, I'd like to thank our Board's Administrator Assistant, Debra Brown, who was my spectator. But without her, we cannot have this. Um, her vision and dedication really is what brought this and that together, so thank you, Debra. Uh, there's a slight change to her program. You will know that Zeynep Aron, who is a board member, is down towards the bottom of the list, we're removing her. And so video reading will be right after the Lansing High School centers. And with that, it will be for the center, so please join me in standing at the national hall.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed as the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright swords through the perilous fight, o'er the brown parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof to the guns that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Good morning to you all. Before I do my reading, I want to set the stage. When you walked in, do you remember, do you recall the signs that were at the door? You saw a sign that said colored, and you saw a sign that said white. That is the environment that we were in. That is the basis of what Brown vs. Board of Education was all about. I was five years old when this was passed. I grew up and graduated from a segregated school. My brother joked, he said, let me tell you how it was when I came along. He said, the superintendent was also the principal, was also the teacher, was also the bus driver, was also the custodian, was also the social worker. All in one, he said, we now have diversified. So just being in an environment where you were properly staffed was a step in the right direction. Little did I know, at age five, that I would have the honor of standing in this building where it all began, where I was given the opportunity to soar, not because of the color of my skin, but based on my ability, which is why I so strongly advocate for education. It makes a difference. And when we can start thinking that it's not about race, it's about potential that we all possess. With that being said, I'd like to read an excerpt from a speech that was given by Martin Luther King at the New School. This particular excerpt was not publicized as much. In fact, it was lost for many years, but it was in response to a question and answer section on why we can't wait. The Negro had been deeply disappointed over the slow space, pace of school desegregation. He knew that in 1954, the highest court in the land had handed down a decree calling for desegregation of schools with all deliberate speed. He knew that this edit from the beginning of, uh, knew that this edit from the Supreme Court had been heated with all deliberate delay. At the beginning of 1963, nine years after this historic decision, approximately 9% of Southern Negro students were attending integrated schools. If this pace were maintained, it would be the year 2054 before integration in Southern schools would be a reality. In its wording, the Supreme Court decision had revealed an awareness that attempts would be made to evade, to evade its intent. The phrase "all deliberate speed" did not mean that another century should be allowed to unfold before we released Negro children from the narrow pigeonhole of the segregated schools. It meant that giving some courtesy and consideration to the need for solving old attitudes and outdated customs, democracy must press ahead. Out of the passive ignorance and intolerance, and into the present of educational opportunity and moral freedom, why we can't wait? If I were to look in my rearview mirror, I could say, we've come a long way. But if I looked through my windshield, I say and I remind you today, we still have a long way to go. Thank you. We are delighted this morning to introduce first Simone Holloway. Simone is a distinguished scholar from College Prep Academy and Jardine Middle School. Her dedication to excellence is evident in her academic achievements, diverse extracurricular involvement, and focus on equity and justice. Simone is an accomplished cellist, involved with the Topeka Youth Orchestra Symphony Net, and she also participates in dance and young life. She is an outspoken middle school scholar focused on equity and justice. Simone has removed barriers and stereotypes of what African-American girls can achieve with her 4.0 GPA. Her participation in athletics, earning two gold and two silver medals at the All-City Track meet, and her leadership on the Jardine Middle School Student Council demonstrate her commitment to service and leadership within her school and her community. So please join me in welcoming this remarkable young scholar, Miss Simone Holloway.
Well, thank you. I didn't know I was going to be getting all of that. This morning, I will be reading an opening reading that comes from a 1985 inch year with Linda Brown. It's by the author of Eyes Home to Pies, America's Civil Rights Years, by Hon Williams. I was a very young child when I started walking to school. I remember the walk as being very long at the time. In fact, it was self, several blocks up through railroad yards, and crossing a busy avenue, and standing on the corner, and waiting for the school bus to carry me two miles across to an all-black school. Being the young child when I first started the walk, it was very frightening to me. And then when winter time came, it was a very cold walk. I remember, I remember walking, tears freezing up on my face, because I began to cry because it was so cold. And many times, I had to turn around and run back home. Linda Brown was my age, and she had to fight for her education. Thank you.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank each and every one of you all for taking time out of your day to come to this event, to listen to our speakers, to the beautiful music from the choir, and learn a little bit more about our shared history. My name is Lawson Wakudo. I'm a park ranger here at Brown vs. Board of Education, National Historical Park. And I've made it my life's work, my career, to talk about our difficult histories, everything from the transatlantic slave trade, to abolitionism, to citizens of rights movement. I would like to use my time here to sort of unveil what segregation looked like across the United States. Now, when you think of segregation, you think of the signs that you saw when you first walked into the building that clearly say whites and colored. But I want to point out a major distinction between how it was, how it was actually done here in the Midwest in comparison to the South. In the South, the word color was a catch-all term. It was there to describe everyone who was not white. So the segregation signs have also affected Latin Americans, Asian Americans, Native Americans, and people who are biracial to any degree. That was the extent that settlers wanted to go to completely disadvantage anyone who was not white. And I think it's important to point that out, because all the time, you see that these other groups and their stories don't get told as much. But in the South, everything you can possibly think of was segregated, down to hospitals, to, to where you live, to water fountains. Those separated by whites and colored. Now, this separation, it was there to not just disadvantage people of color, but to also send a very pertinent message. And the image that comes to mind when I think about that message is the image that my mother showed me when I was about eight years old. A picture of two water fountains. One said white, another said colored. The water fountains for white settlers, they, it was ornate, it was encased in wood and metal, it was very nice to look at. The colored water fountain was much, much smaller, had no cases, you could see all the pipes, and it was much lower to the ground to make it more difficult to drink of. But the wild thing about that is, they were connected to the exact same pipes, so you're getting the exact same water. Message was clear. If you are a person of color, if you're not 100% white, you are less than because of those reasons. Now, a group called the NWCAP, a little-known group, I'm not sure if you all may have heard of them. But they saw these things that were happening, and they made it their life's work to get rid of segregation through legal means. And that's where the Brown vs. Board of Education court cases come to play. And I say cases plural, because it's five court cases combined into one. Holy B Sharp in Washington DC, Bula Belton B. Getheart in Delaware, Brigsby Elliott, South Carolina, Brown vs. Board of Education, Native American Kansas. All of them came together to try to tackle racial injustice in the education system. Now, the NWCAP, they had excellent lawyers, but they hadn't, also had an ace in the hole. And that's where Doctors Kenneth and Maybe Clark come into play. They've been working on something called the Clark Doll Study since the 1930s. Now, quick show of hands, who has heard of the Clark Doll Study? Very good. For, for everyone who hasn't heard of it, it's about to get really depressing in here. The Clark Doll Study went as follows. Doctors Kenneth, Maybe Clark, husband and wife, they had over 200 children, and they showed them two dolls by asking them very pointed questions. They had a black doll and a white doll. They would ask these children, whose ages were between five to 12 years old, out of these two dolls, which one do you think is smart? Which one do you think is pretty? Which one do you think is nice? Which one's friendly? Which one's good? And what they found was, the overwhelming majority of white children chose the positive things for the white doll and negative things for the black doll. It's the South, that was unexpected. But what was unexpected by the Supreme Court that was hearing this information was that the children of color also chose the positive attributes for the white doll and negative ones for the black doll. Now, that's really puzzling. Things went from puzzling to downright heartbreaking when the final, where the answers to the final question were admitted. Out of these two dolls, which one do you think was most like you? Now, for the white children, that's when they started to feel really bad about their answers. And that's important to note, because it shows that these children, not only did they have empathy, but they realized that if they chose the positive things for the white doll, what does that mean for the black doll? These ideas of racial superiority and segregation are not something that we're born with, had to be taught over a long period of time. And for the children of color... And for the children of color, when they're asked the same exact question, some of them refused to answer. Others began to cry. Some ran in the room in frustration. And one little girl in particular, who was African-American, said that she looks most like the white doll. That's really difficult information here. It was even difficult for the Supreme Court to hear. Now, I told you all this is going to get depressing, but it's going to get a little bit more depressing before we get a little more hopeful. This was confusing information, but this just opened up another question. Why? Why do these children have such a deeply-seated inferiority complex? Why do they feel this way about themselves? And that was the easiest answer that the NAACP ever had to answer. They could just vaguely gesture at the world around them itself. Because what these children were experiencing was deprivation, was being belittled, was being looked down upon because of their racial background and the color of their skin. The country that they lived in, the laws that they lived under, among these children, they're less than for these immutable factors. Now, the depressing stuff is that way. Let's get a little more hopeful. After this information was given to the Supreme Court, had a decision. And just by looking around this room, I can tell we're now in a segregated society now. So I'm sure we know that in May 17, 1954, the Brown decision was finalized, kind of. And segregation in public schools was considered unconstitutional. And that's great. However, that was just the beginning. 1954 was the beginning of the series of sweeping civil rights victories for the next 11 to 12 years. Things like the Voting Rights Act of 1965, things like the Civil Rights Act of 1964, those shaped the America that we live in today so all people, regardless of the color of their skin, can go to the same schools, sit anywhere they like on the bus, go to hospitals. And that is amazing. But like many of the other speakers said, we still have a ways to go. And I think the fact that you all are here on this day, in this park, talking about this very important subject of education is emblematic of the positive change that we need to aspire to, not just as individuals, but as a state and as a nation. So once again, I'd like to thank all of you so much for being here today, learning, and living what you've learned. Thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. Celebrating the past. I love that. I am proud of pride of segregation. I don't want anyone to ever feel sorry for us Black children that had that experience. I'm thankful that I was born, I guess, during that time that I could share this. First of all, I want to say there would be no Brown v. Board without Mr. McKinley Burnett. He lived right over on Quincy Street. He was a Christian man. He was the president of the Pika Branch NAACP. I celebrate his name, and I want everyone to remember that and to study him. He had two jobs. He worked at Santa Fe Railroad and the Vietnamese VA Hospital. He would save all of his vacation time because the Pika Board of Education would change the dates for the meetings to keep him from coming and taking the time that citizens could take to ask, to talk about segregation. He was smarter than them because he had all this time. So whenever the meeting was changed, he was there. So there would be no Brown v. Board without Mr. McKinley Burnett. Also, a mention about the NAACP attorneys. He later, he was attorney member, third good marshal, Justice Third Good Marshal, came to the Pika, helped strategize. We had a beautiful lady educator, Mrs. Lucinda Todd. She, um... I'm getting off now, but I guess I shouldn't say that. Anyway, I am. She was a member of African-American Episcopal congregation. So I would, different churches. There were three in Topeka, but anyway. I fellowshiped a lot with her and knew her and her daughter. Now, she was concerned, as an educator in the white schools in the Pika Public Schools Board, the white schools had music instruments, had music classes. In the black schools, we did not have that. We had music, vocal music, but not instruments. And I have figured out that she knew her daughter Nancy had a talent. And so she was the secretary for her in the ACP branch. And so she, um... Third Good Marshal came and worked at her home. And her, I like to tell everybody that when you go to the African-American Museum in Washington DC, her lace dining room tablecloth is on display there. And so she's a hero that I want people to know about. So I'm going to tell you about McKinley Elementary. It was one of the four schools. We were in North Topeka. They call that section of North Topeka Redmond Field or Sands. When I grew up, I thought we called it Sandtown. But now I know why they said Sands. And it was a community. If you Google, it says about the beautiful trees and that it was, the settlement was exodusters. So I'm proud that I'm a product of exodusters that came here. My family came from Gentilly. But McKinley Elementary, from kindergarten to the sixth grade, I experienced all-black teachers, all-black students. A wonderful world. Even to today, we're family with some of us that are still around. We're thankful. I went to a funeral recently, and this little lady, 92, she said, "Here comes North Topeka." And so this is how we're all together. We loved each other. But the custodian was, of course, was black. The district hired a black nurse, Mrs. Norman, to travel to our black schools and take care of us. So we had a black nurse. Until she passed, we loved her, and she loved us. Our custodian, the nurse, made things I wanted. But I want to share this one thing that it's not always for everybody now. When we walked into that school every day, we were loved. We were respected. And there was always high expectations for us. In talking to some of the students from the other schools, those were the standards that were set with our black elementary, our educators. Now, unfortunately, the Pika Public Schools, in 1954, with the decision, they sent a letter to all the black teachers that their contracts would not be renewed because white parents would not want their children taught by black educators. Most of our educators, they, a lot of them had what's their bachelor's degrees? Some had doctorates. They were highly educated. But this is the bias that we were living in in that timeframe, that this is how it was felt. The one thing I'll say about the Pika Public Schools, that our schools, as you can see here, it was a beautiful, well-minted, built schools and well-minted. Our school, McKinley, was just as nice, had marble floors. I can still remember my principal, Ms. Williams. She wore heels. Teachers in those days wore suits, dressed. I have a thing about that, too. And maybe because that's how, as a child, when, you know, when she drove up in that little black car, of course, we didn't have a car. You know, that was special, too, to see, you know, for that. But the main thing was I could hear those heels coming down the hall. Not that we did, I didn't do anything wrong, but we knew she was, she was about to come in our room. The good thing also about our black educators, a lot of them were in our neighborhoods. My next-door neighbor, there were two educators, elementary. One of them, Ms. Harmon, Geraldine Harmon. Excuse me. Mom and them had to tell me I could not go to school and call her Jared. I had to call her Ms. Harmon. But that's how close we were to our teachers. And they were in our communities. They went to our schools. And so, um... I'm just thankful, thankful, thankful for the life that we, that experienced being in a segregated school. And my first experience that I can remember with prejudice, I was about 12 in junior high. And it was very interesting because in the state of Kansas, the law was your junior high and high school were integrated. So Curtis Junior High was the school in North Topeka that I went to. And so you make friends. You think you make friends there. And so in North Topeka, you didn't have to go across the river. Everything was there. And so one Saturday, my grandma was sending me down to give her, to give her candy. That's why I like candy. But anyway, but I was in Ben Franklin's. And there was a student that, we had classes together. And I spoke to him, said hi. And he acted like he didn't know me. And I thought, he was with his mother and his father. And I thought, okay, this is how this... And that was my first experience. So what happened was, in the extended school, he goes to speak to me. Of course, I never spoke to him again. And I have a look that some people say I gave. I probably gave him that look. And so he knew that was it. But the main thing is that I want to share is that so many years ago, when I had a child and her best friends, little girls who come to my house were white. And so that is the good thing that we have become an integrated society, diversity. And so, but again, I don't want anyone to ever feel sorry for these Black children that attended segregated schools because for life, we're down. Seventy years.
I would now like to introduce to you Ms. Cora Jackson Wells. Ms. Cora Jackson Wells is a Topeka West scholar. And she is connected to the landmark Brown v. Board of Education case through her great-grandmother's niece, and that is Ms. Catherine Carper. Catherine is the daughter of Lena Carper, one of the original plaintiffs. And so this connection provides a unique historical perspective that enriches Cora's participation in today's event. And despite her young age, Cora is deeply connected to her family's legacy, drawing inspiration from their resilience and history. In addition to her academic and athletic endeavors, Cora works part-time as a cashier at Ross, balancing work in school with commendable dedication. Her life is a testament to the values of hard work, community, and the importance of family. These are values that she shares with her parents, Joseph Williams, and Rachel Wells, and her siblings. As Cora reads quotes from the Brown v. Board decision today, she not only honors her family's legacy, but also reminds us of the ongoing journey toward equity and justice. Please, join me in welcoming Cora Jackson Wells.
Thank you. I will be reading a reading from Supreme Court Justice Warren's 1954 opinion for Court on Brown v. Board of Education. "We conclude that in the view of public education, adoption of separately equal has no regard. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. Therefore, we hold that the plaintiffs of a similarly situated criminal actions as they brought are by reason of the segregation complaint of depravity of the equal protection of the law as guaranteed by the 14th Amendment."
I believe in the soul. I believe in the soul. Even when it's a struggle. I believe in the soul. I believe in the soul. Even when, even when it's a struggle. I believe in the soul. I believe in the soul. Even when, even when it's a struggle. I believe in the soul. I believe in the soul. Even when, even when it's a struggle. I believe in the soul. I believe in the soul. Even when, even when it's a struggle. I believe in the soul. I believe in the soul. Even when, even when it's a struggle. I believe in the soul. I believe in the soul. Even when, even when it's a struggle. I believe in my, I believe in my, even when, even when I don't feel it.
Well, good morning. Esteemed members of the State Board of Education, Commissioner Watson, parents, students, everyone. I am honored to be here. For those that don't know me, my name is Keith Tatum. I am the president of the USD 501 Topeka Board of Education. And as honored as I am to be here, I want to be completely transparent. I have a confession. You see, when Dr. Watson asked me if I would speak for about ten minutes to you all this morning, he did not know what he was getting. For those that know me, they know that I am a teacher, a preacher, a trainer, and a politician. None of those professions lend themselves to ten-minute speeches. But I'm gonna do the best I can and try to land this plane in ten minutes or less. We are here this morning because we are building on a legacy. The park ranger who spoke before us, and Ms. Carolyn, did a fantastic job of laying out what the situation was, for lack of a better term, what the current climate was, if you were a person of color before the ground decision in 1954. And I have to tell you, I am honored to be the president of the USD 501 Board of Education, being fully aware that this is the same school board that was on the wrong side of history before the ground versus Board decision came down. Me as a black man, I'm heading up the same body, not the same individuals, but the same body that was on the wrong side of history. The villains, if you would, of the segregated, segregated school system that existed right here in Topeka, Kansas. And having said that, I'm also fully cognizant of the fact that I, and all of us, are standing on the shoulders of giants. Some of those aforementioned giants who paved the way for us to be where we are today. Talking about Third-Brook Marshall and N double A C P, McKinley Burnett, the Brown family, the other plaintiff families. We stand on their shoulders. And because of that, here in our time, our challenge is to be pioneers of opportunity. We are the pioneers of the opportunities that have set before, have been set before us. Because those giants on whose shoulders we stand, they came before us as the pioneers of equal opportunity, right? They were the pioneers that made it possible for us to begin to transition into an integrated school and educational system here in Topeka and across the entire country. So because they were the pioneers of equal opportunity, our challenge now is to be the pioneers of future opportunity. A future opportunity for all of our children, no matter where they come from, what they look like, what their skin color happens to be. This work we do is love in action. It's love in action. And I know he's, he's running for president of the United States right now, but Dr. Cornel O. West, long before he ever decided to run as presidential candidate, he said something very impactful to me. Dr. West said, "Justice is what love looks like in public." And I have a corollary to that. That was incredibly impactful to me, but I have a corollary to that. And that is, education is also what love looks like in public. We pour our energy and our effort, our support and our potential into children. The children that are gonna come after us when we're long gone, our children will inherit this world. And I believe, I still believe in the old adage, that education is the great equalizer. It is incumbent upon each of us to be pioneers of future opportunity. And I have to call out something. When you walked in this morning, each and every one, and you pass through the foyer area, out of that hallway, on the north side of the hallway, there's a couple of pictures. And they're from the same period of time. And one shows a black school building, and the other shows a white school building. If you haven't noticed it before, maybe you'll notice it on the way out today. Because the differences could not be more stark. The condition of the black school building says to the students and the teachers who are a part of that institution, that you all are not our future. You're not our future, we're not investing in you. The white building, absolutely the opposite message. Absolutely the opposite message. We want to be pioneers of future opportunities. And we are working to pioneer future opportunities for our children to have the power to transform insecurity into ingenuity. The power to transform powerless into prestigious. Misery into mastery. Frustrated into formidable. Doubtful into dynamic. And known to hope. This is more than just a job, right? For those of us in the educational community, this is a calling. And no one knows more about that than the professionals who work for USD 501 Topeka Schools. I'm here representing USD 501, so I gotta, I gotta give a shout-out, I gotta give a highlight to those wonderful individuals that helped make the district run and be what it is for our students. And so, from the north side of Topeka, Quincy Elementary, to the south side at Ross Elementary, those individuals are called to do the work that they do. In East Topeka, they might be at Chase Middle School, all the way over to West Topeka with French Middle School. They're professionals, they're working hard for our students, being pioneers of opportunity. And whether we have students at the high school level that are at Topeka High, Topeka West, Highland Park, Avondale Academy, Capital City, or Hope Street, our professionals there are the pioneers of future opportunities for those schools. The future opportunities for the next generation of our students includes students that are going into a variety of different professions. They are students that may be the next generation of certified public accountants, or structural engineers, culinary chefs, small business entrepreneurs, X-ray technicians, pharmacists, auto mechanics, licensed practical nurses, plumbers, firefighters, biochemists, and even public school teachers. To be sure, our challenges will continue. Whether they are the challenges of continuing to excel and to raise the bar for our high school graduation rates, whether it's improving third-grade reading math scores, whether it's getting our youngest citizens ready for pre-k, for the challenges behind school finances, promoting school safety, supporting special education, supporting ESL. These are our challenges that will continue going forward. But because we are pioneers of future opportunity, we are up to that challenge. We will rise to that occasion and support our students in being the best that they can be. So on behalf of the entire USD 501 School Board, I want to say to all of you, thank you for being here this morning. And thank you for supporting the public education of all of our children. Wow. Isn't that right? As someone who is in choir, in a select choir, and cannot sing, I have distinct admiration for all of you. I'm Randy Watson, Commissioner of Education. I want to thank you for being here today. Deborah has been called out for her organization already today. She would come to me, you know, she said, "It's the seventieth anniversary, it's really be good to have done." I've known Deborah for a long time. She's worked for me a short period of time, but come to know her even better. And I said, "Just run with it." Because I knew, as a former history teacher, that that vision was just gonna be outstanding. And everyone that's participated today has certainly been that. And Keith, I'd do it all over again, give you ten minutes. I just wanted to know, that was outstanding. I, you know, this is a museum, right? It's a museum of history. I was just thinking, and I was, Cora, I was watching you and Simone earlier, and watching all of you. I think all of us here at the State Board, you look at us, what do we do? Right? What do we do on a local board? It seems so removed sometimes from the daily activities. And I was thinking, as I was sitting there, seventy years ago, Carolyn talked about, she was sitting in a classroom. Seventy years ago, when a Brown was sitting in a classroom. Fifty years ago, Bob was sitting in a classroom in high school. And thinking, we're here listening to words, words. But for these avenues, this isn't a museum, it's a school. This morning, we got here a little early. And they opened up early just for us. And the school buses were coming by. And I walked in the building, Carolyn, and I was thinking, you heard the principal coming down, right? I can just envision the kids running in. You know, I ask all of you, it's the end of school, you're waiting to run out. Right? We get that. This is our school. We are seated here today on the hourglass of the school that you've all described as opportunity. You know, Cora, and for Simone, for all of you, you know, Carolyn's a dear friend, sat on this board, and used to tell me, you know, I smiled so big because one told me a lot of things as Commissioner. But one was, "When we go get these teachers dressed a little bit better," you know, that was just one of many, right? One of many, because, you know, we used to dress up. One of many, because, you know, we used to dress up a little bit. Professionally, professionally. I hope you have the opportunity to visit this school, go to the kindergarten class, look at the words and the pictures on the wall that, for some of you that are younger, you'll look and go, "Mm-hmm, that's history." For others, it's what they live. You get the opportunity, Cora, and often the lance is singer, you get the opportunity to write the next part of history. And then you'll be old like me, standing up here talking about it, and the kids will look at you and go, "That's really nice." It's not how we think about it. On your way out, there's a bookstore on your way out. So it's more words. You can buy these books, you can go to the library and check these books out. And I want to share with you maybe the best book about this place, the history, called Simple Justice. It was a book written by Richard Kluber a long time ago, in 1975, and then in 1976, he wrote it in two volumes, it's eight hundred pages. It's the most researched, well-documented history of slavery leading up to this decision. He rewrote that, kind of tidied it up, in early 2000. It's now one volume, you can buy it in one volume, that speaks to that. And I'm gonna read a little passage from that as we wrap up today. "America is a colossus of contradictions. For certain, the justice of any time cannot materialize in such an untidy place without binding up of its constituent elements. And that is unlikely ever to occur until Americans of every variety acknowledge that what separates them is small change, small change, when counted against all they hold in common. Possessing soul is not uniquely black or white state of grace, any more than owning a white or black skin, or a beige, olive, sallow, or rooty one is a mark of either superiority or disgrace. A precept let us admit in candor, but with hope, that is more easily stated than lived. In the celebration of this week, we have the opportunity to live in a way that promotes us forward. That is our hope. Thank you for being here today, thank you for celebrating, have a good summer to the students, and we look forward to seeing you next year. Thank you all."